This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. This meeting was included in a list of meeting dates sent to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on January 3rd, 2019, and was posted on the bulletin board of Borough Hall 221 South Fifth Avenue on January 3rd, 2019, and has remained continuously posted as directed by law. (laughing) Sorry. Fire exits are to my left and to my right. Assistive listening devices are available, and please step up to the microphone when you come to speak. Monique, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Okay, roll call, please.
Mayor Burrell Middler.
Here.
Councilwoman Fine.
Here.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin.
Yes, here.
Councilwoman George.
Here.
Councilwoman Hale.
Here.
Councilwoman Kim Chohan.
Here.
Councilwoman Welkowitz.
Here.
Borough Attorney.
Here.
Borough Administrator.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular and conference meetings held March 5th, 2019, and March 19th, 2019, as distributed?
Also move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So, before I start with the council reports, I am going to let you know that there's been -- there's going to be a slight change to the format in the early part of the meeting. You may or may not have heard that we are going to be voting on a resolution endorsing the creation of a medical marijuana facility here in Highland Park. And in order to allow folks to talk a little bit to that, we're going to pull that out of the regular conference -- regular consent agenda, and we will have public discussion on that fifteen -- for 15 minutes, that's the 15-minute session, right before we get into that resolution. So, I'm going to ask that only folks who have something to say about medical marijuana, please use that time to talk to us about that, and if there is anyone who wants to talk about something else, remember we have the second session later on in the meeting. Okay, council reports. I'm going to start on my right with Councilwoman Kim Chohan.
Yes, I do have a report, Mayor. The Motor Vehicle Commission Mobile Unit was well-received last month. It helped out many of our residents, especially our seniors, and thank you to the community center staff and Police Department for pulling this service together. Thank you. Special presentations, that's open to all on Monday, August 19th at 10:00 a.m. Please join us to learn about Medicaid fraud, and on Tuesday, August 20th, at 10:00 a.m. Join us as AARP presents a Fraud Watch Identity Theft Program, and how to avoid identity theft. These will be educational and informative programs. These programs will be at the HP Community Center. And then join us for a fun afternoon to play Jeopardy!, bought to us by the Brain Health Network on Tuesday, August 27th, at 3:00 p.m. And our End of Summer Ice Cream Social will be held on Thursday, August 29th, at 12:30 p.m. And Recreation, still, I wanted to announce again that you can now register online for our rec programs and visit HighlandParkRec.com. You can pay -- you can still pay in person, or you can pay online as well. We are in our final two weeks of summer camp. Please see our Facebook page for updates. The youth fall soccer and flag football registration has started. The youth theater in the fall will be doing Frozen Junior for 4th to 10th grades and Cinderella for 1st to 5th grades. And please see the website or our Facebook page at Highland Park NJ Recreation. Over in the Arts Commission, Ask Access Granted, the project focusing on people living with disabilities. A reminder, this was a grant that we received from the county. It's moving forward smoothly. We have 13 participants and two photographers. Allison Baldwin is taking the lead on this project and is doing a great job with the supervision of our chair Pandora Scooter. And we've decided to do an improv workshop, a tattoo artistry workshop, and a dance workshop in the fall. We're currently picking dates and moving forward with them, and we're planning to participate in Arts in the Park, situating a table near the corner of 4th and Raritan to direct people to the Band-Aid bench on the day of. And the next meeting for the Arts Commission is Thursday, August 8th, 6:00 p.m., here at Borough Hall. The Arts Commission is working on the 150th anniversary celebration of Raritan Township, and including holding walking tours again. When they did the walking tours last year, almost a year and a half ago, we had to add a second date because the first date was actually sold out. Although it's free, we had to have committee commissioners on the tour to -- we did an audio walking tour. And the Historic Commission is working with the Arts Commission to present the Band-Aid bench at Arts in the Park. And they're also working on submitting comments for the Highland Park Master Plan update. So, be on the lookout for that. Last night, I joined Councilwoman Foster Dublin -- Foster Dublin, entire public service team, and the Middlesex County Fire Chief at Forest Glen Treetops Apartments for community meeting with the residents, including myself as a resident, that's where I live, and the apartment management, to discuss the recurring flyers there. Thank you to Councilwoman Foster Dublin because I sent her a very lengthy email after the third fire occurred there. Lastly, I joined those mourning the loss and yet more senseless acts of gun violence in El Paso and Dayton. Sadly, thoughts and prayers won't bring back these innocent people who were murdered by individuals with access to high-powered assault weapons. If you want to find out ways to help advocate for change, we're fortunate to have an activist in town, Karen Cantor, the Middlesex County Chair of the Brady Campaign to Prevent Gun Violence, and more information at Brady.org. That's my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Hale, do you have a report?
Thank you very much. I do have a few items. I just wanted to give a shout-out and a thank you to Highland Park Gives a Hoot, and in particular Chair Michael Buckman, who have been providing summer scholarships to our kids for summer camp for quite some time. This year, they had to dig quite a little bit deeper into their coffers and their fundraising in order to do that, and they were able to do that. So, I wanted to give them an extra shout-out for that and a thank you for that. They've also been working in a number of different places to provide summer meals for some of our teens, working with the Teen Center, working with the Global Grace Cafe in a number of different ways. And again, I think it's a great example of a committee that is taking steps to really helping our kids. I also wanted to give a thanks and a note to the Universal Access Committee. Many of you may know that they've had a fund in the past that from -- for people who park in disabled lots and get tickets for it. Some of that funds have been able to come to the Universal Access Committee for projects around town, and they've done quite an amazing list of projects recently. I've talked before about how they've supported and helped making sure that the Main Street building is accessible through some of those funds. They've also recently helped with a food pantry and purchasing carts so that people who attend at a food pantry have a way of bringing the food home. And so, I just wanted to say that they have, again, sort of partnered with a lot of different other organizations throughout the borough, and I just wanted to say thank you to Tara and the committee and everybody about all the hard work that they do historically. It's been fantastic to work with them. And then, lastly, I just wanted to say thank you to the chief and the captain and to Chief Sproul for our second open public meeting for -- with the chief. I wanted to say thank you for his willingness and their willingness to come and listen and talk to residents and hear their concerns. I think that in the future, we can do a much better job of publicizing that, and that's on us and the borough, and I pledge that we hope to do that in the future. But I do appreciate, you know, your -- the willingness to talk to people, and I appreciate to everybody who came out. So, there were probably about 40 or 50 people who came to the meeting, and I think that's the sort of type of dialogue that we're striving for and continuing with. And so, I just wanted to say thank to the -- thank you to the chief, and thank you to the people who came out for that. So, that's it.
Councilwoman Welkowitz.
Thank you, Mayor. First, just in order of business, Borough Clerk, may I abstain from approving those minutes because I was abstinent in one of them?
Sure.
I'll note it, though. Thank you. Okay. Just a few things. This Thursday, our Planning Board will be meeting at 7:30 p.m. here in council chambers. That's Thursday, August 10. And two important things on the agenda. We've been working on our bicycle pedestrian safety plan, and the consultants will be here once again doing a presentation, this time just for the Planning Board. We had the original open public meeting back on June 18th. So, Thursday, they'll be presenting to the Planning Board. This, again, is through a grant by the New Jersey Department of Transportation. Our consultants, WSP and DOT, and a representative from DOT, will present the plan proposed, and they'll take some questions as well from the public. Another item will be an update on our master plan review, so that's of interest, too. And a few things happening in downtown, as usual. Our farmer's market, every Friday from 11:00 to 5:30. Upcoming special events, the August Fest on August 23rd, but that's every Friday, we have our wonderful farmer's market. And then, later on in the evening, we have music on the corner from 7:00 p.m. to 8:30 on North 4th and Raritan. Our outdoor movie theater. Two more shows are left, August 10th, The Fly, and August 24th, The Castle of Cagliostro. Movies start at 9:00, but vintage cartoons start showing at dusk, so bring out the family for that. And also, think about grabbing some late dinner and sitting there on a blanket or in some beach chairs and enjoying the movie with your friends and family. And lastly, two more items. Our annual garage sale is coming up September 14 and 15. If you'd like to register, please do so. You can register at HPGarageSale@gmail.com. And as you know, that they give out a map so that your address will be on the map, so people will want to come to your home and buy your junk.[860.12][860.12](laughter) And lastly, Arts in the Park will be September 22. Still looking for any vendors or artists that would like to participate? You can contact MainStreetHP.org. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Councilwoman Foster Dublin, do you have a report?
Yes, I do. Important things. Next Tuesday, the 13th, will be National Night Out, and the location has been moved this year. National Night Out will be over at Irving School, so we've been sending out emails and information. Please come out for our National Night Out here in Highland Park. The new location is over by the Irving School, and it starts at 6:00 p.m. So, please come out and be willing to meet your police officers, ask questions, and bring your children, get informed, and see what's going on, what's new in our police department. And also, anyone who's in need of a helmet, they can go to our police department and get a helmet for the kids, so that's available as well. And the program of court being Go to a Court Wherein Your Helmet is still in place. If an officer sees you, you need a helmet, they'll offer children a helmet as well. The Teen Center. The Teen Center has a number of programs going, and but first of all, I want to thank Panera Bread. Every Monday, they deliver fresh baked items to our Teen Center, and we're very grateful for that. This coming -- the 14th will be a teen movie night at the Teen Center, and it's going to be Ninja Turtle. And on the 15th of this month, there's going to be an opportunity for kids to learn how to play music beats. So, beats is how they learned it, the different beats of music, so that's going to be at the Teen Center. So, anyone who's interested, please come out. And then, on the 17th, it will be Girl Talk. And Girl Talk will be talking to female -- Highland Park former female graduates will come back and have a conversation, and it's going to be a Girl Talk session for any young ladies who want to come out and be a part of this. On the 28th, will be a trip to the Philadelphia Zoo, and also, I'm sorry, not Philadelphia, to Philadelphia, and they will all -- some of the students will attend Lincoln University for a campus tour, so that's going to be on the 28th. So, a lot of wonderful things happening over at the Teen Center. Please stop in when you have a moment. I also want to thank the borough for -- this is the fifth year that they have had Yele, the Young African Leaders, in at the borough, and given them the opportunity to see how the borough functions, from our library or police department, our Teen Center, to our community service center. And within the borough, they had an opportunity to come once a week for a couple of hours and learn how our government function. And I want to especially thank Harry because he took the charge on this this year and helped them tremendously. And they are always grateful to be in Highland Park, to learn about how the U.S. government system works, our local government system works, and the services that we provide, so they can take that back home and to their various countries and be a part of how they can make their communities a little bit better. We'll learn from them, they learn from us. Community Forum, we had the Community Forum on the 30th, and as Matt had described, that, you know, we had a healthy showing of persons. We're going to be having our next Community Forum in October. The date is to be determined, and hopefully, with the warmer weather and people not on vacation, we'll get a larger turnout, and we can't wait to have these discussions and hear what's on your mind and share what the Highland Park Police Department 2020 vision is, and take it from there. One more. The Junior Cadet Academy, we had, and we had approximately 50 graduates this year, and it was really good. We had an opportunity to come and speak with these young people, hear what's on their mind, share a little bit with them, and they were happy to hear from us, they were happy to share with us, they were doing some really wonderful things. And hopefully, in next year, we were -- unfortunately, we had to turn away some students this year, but hopefully, next year, we'll be in a better place where we can get more young people to participate, who want to participate, to get them involved in the Junior Cadet Academy. We had -- we have been experiencing a series of fires in Highland Park, and as Councilwoman Kim Chohan said, that yesterday, we had an opportunity to visit Forest Glen, to talk to the residents about what's going on, what's, you know, the fires and stuff like that. They had a lot of questions, and that prompted me to speak with the Fire Marshal and our Fire Department. And we're going to be doing a series of community education as it pertains to public safety and fire. So, in the school year, September, October, the Fire Department goes out, they speak with the students in the school, but we want to take it a bit -- a step further and go to the community and have that conversation, and hopefully, we'll get some demonstration going with the different trucks, and people can see what a fire is, what to do, what not to do. So, we're going to be working on going out into the various communities and educate, do a fire education seminars with the residents. And I do want to thank all the first responders that came out to respond to the fires, and all the mutual aid companies that came out and responded, and especially Middlesex County Fire Marshal Department. They were with us last night, and they sent two members, and they continue to support us. So, we're going to work on making sure that all our residents are safe and we can eliminate the fires that we're having in town. With that said, I too also want to echo that the gun violence in this country is totally out of control. We -- a number of years ago, we had a couple of seminars here in this chamber where we offered gun safety information. We also offered gun locks. I don't know, Chief, do you still have any of those locks?
We have the bunch.
And we have -- we had gun locks, and people, if people have guns, we offered free gun locks. If you're interested, you can go to the police department if you have a gun, and you can get gun locks there. And if you have guns that you want to turn in, it has to be placed in the trunk of the car, and then you call the police department, let them know that you want to turn in. And I think the Middlesex County Sheriff's Department will take care of that as well. With that, I saw that today Acting Governor Sheila Oliver passed some very, I think, the strongest gun bills that we have in this country, and she did that today. So, I'm hoping that we all will stay safe, and something will be done on a national level as it pertains to gun violence and the rhetoric that's floated around behind all of that. With that said, that's my report.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I make -- the activist that I was referring to, Karen, that's here, sorry. I mentioned you on my report for the Brady Campaign. Sorry you weren't here. If you want to speak to her after the meeting, to get involved.
Okay. Councilman Fine.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have just one item to share. On July 18th, the Mayor, the Borough Administrator, and I met with Governor Murphy's shared services czars Nicholas Platt and Jordan Glatt, and a number of Middlesex County Mayors and representatives from the surrounding municipalities in Middlesex County. The purpose, to explore shared services ideas. As a follow-up to the July 18th meeting, there's sort of a working group of representatives from Metuchen, Piscataway, and Highland Park that will be meeting on August 27th to further discuss a possible shared service between our municipalities. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President, do you have a report?
I do, Mayor. Thank you. First, with regard to DPW's deployment of the newest trash collector, many of you have seen that the DPW was busy all last week delivering the large or the small size, depending if you requested a smaller size. Toters have been given out. The routes will be starting very shortly. We -- I talked briefly late last week with DPW about the possibility of actually having a demonstration. Many people on the new route have asked a lot of questions, how far away, is it going to be moved, does it have to be near a car? And we thought that we'll try and do something, but there's some vacations, but hopefully, we'll have some sort of a demonstration shortly to let people know visually how it's going to work. I know some people are also concerned, some of the side streets that feed into the main streets, the routes are covering certain streets but not others. I had a lot of questions in Districts 1 and 2 on 1st and 2nd about where the routes are going to go. We're hoping to expand to cover 2nd Avenue, but right now, or South 2nd, but right now, we're going to make sure we have the capacity. Also, Councilwoman Kim Chohan mentioned the townwide yard sale, sorry. And just as a reminder, bulk trash has been moved from late August to right after the townwide yard sale. We found that many people leave their trash out. Stuff that didn't sell is left at the curb. We moved it last year, and it was very successful in getting things cleaned up right away. So, we're not going to have a late August one, it's going to be September in the week immediately after the townwide yard sale. Sustainable Highland Park has been very active over the summer. They've referred to resolutions with regard to climate change and additional expansions of the plastic bag ordinance to consider straws. They are having a pilot program. They have picked up several boxes of paper straws. Middle schoolers, who are actually members of Sustainable Highland Park, have been distributing them along the street to get 15 merchants to see if they'll cooperate to try and do another pilot program like we did with the plastic bags. And so, that is in the process right now. Shade Tree Committee has been working as well. They have 160 trees were purchased for planting in the native plant sanctuary. Some will probably go to the Meadows Trail as well. Just this morning, I was down there early in the morning discussing some matters with Mary Denver, and we had a resident stop by and donate additional native trees for the plant sanctuary while we were standing there as the sun was coming up. So, it's becoming more and more of a popular spot. Environmental Commission works -- meets tomorrow night at 7:30 at the Environmental Center. It is a bit warm, given the weather, but it's -- they have a good agenda scheduled, and we're also looking for members for the Environmental Commission. Tonight, on the agenda, we have a lease ordinance to team with Middlesex County Improvement Authority to combine purchasing power. Please to note that among the vehicles being purchased is our first all-electric vehicle for the inspectors, and a hybrid vehicle for the police department. There are two more to be planned, but right now, we're starting off with those two. We also met recently with the Borough Administrator to discuss our implementation of electric vehicles for the borough as well. Just to follow up with regard to the Arts Commission, Councilwoman Kim Chohan, the recent Middlesex County Senior Arts Competition.
Yes, I did forget that.
We took, I believe, six first place.
Yes, I did forget that. I'm sorry.[1629.01][1629.01](laughter)
Well, it's not technically under the commission, but the commission members are back and forth. And I'm pleased to note that I teamed with a local glass sculpture -- sculptor on a collaborative, and we took first place.
Yep.
So, and finally, with regard in particular to the Dayton shooting, I'm an alumni of the University of Dayton Law School, which was right down the street from the Oregon District, which is a very popular destination, was being reclaimed from a ghetto, a derelict with burned-out buildings when I was in law school in late 1970s. It was -- and I was just there recently for law school alumni in the Oregon District, thriving, delightful, a mixed and multicultural, fascinating area. In fact, we had dinner right at the restaurant directly across the street from the Denver's Restaurant. And I just want to say very simply, I echo what the crowd said, "Do something." Thank you.
Thank you. Borough Administrator's not here. Borough Attorney, do you have a report?
No report, Madam Mayor.
Okay. I have a few things I want to talk about tonight. First of all, I don't know if she's still here, but I want to thank Abby Stern Cardinale and Angela Heine for coming up with the fantastic idea to have a kids' clothing swap. It's going to be held on August 23rd and August 24th from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Teen Center. They are seeking volunteers to help with the setup. Volunteers would receive the clothing, generally help district -- direct people to the cleanup of the event afterwards, and they also need volunteers for the advanced clothing drop, which is, if you have anything to drop off, that is at the Teen Center August 21st, 22nd, and 23rd, from 3:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. So, they are seeking volunteers for this event, and if you'd like to find out more about it, you can email Abby at Abby Stern Cardinale. That's A-B-B-Y-S-T-E, or, I'm sorry. A-B-B-Y-S-T-E. it, you can, uh, email Abby at abbysterncardinali, that's A-B-B-Y-S-T-E, or, I'm sorry, A-B-B-Y-S-T-E-R-N-C-A-R-D-I-N-A-L-E at gmail dot com with the date and time that you are available. Okay, so, several of my, um, fellow administration people today mentioned the horrible shootings that have occurred here again in the United States. We must demand that our representatives in Washington address this in the Senate. It must be addressed. We cannot live in a society where people have to fear going to events like our arts event or our street fairs or if fearing going to movies. This has to stop and the stronghold that the NRA has on our legislators has to stop. So, I want to thank you again, Karen, for all the work that you've been doing with your group in Middlesex County. And as you know, if there's anything we can do to help you, just ask. I also want to talk a little bit about the, um, medical marijuana, uh, resolution that we will be looking at today. I want to make it clear to everyone here that we are only talking about medical marijuana. That is all this council is, um, prepared to discuss. Um, and, uh, I'm hoping that we'll have some good conversation and get input from everyone here, but what Highland Park is looking at today is medical marijuana and just a dispensary. Um, this is a medical situation that will address the needs of many of our residents. And that being said, I'm going to open up for public discussion. This is our first public discussion session, just so you know. Um, we are traditionally limited to 15 minutes of open public comment. Each person coming up has three minutes to talk and I'm going to ask that this first session be dedicated to the medical marijuana discussion because I have a sense there are a lot of people here who want to talk about that. We do have a second session where we can talk about anything else that is on your minds. So, if anyone has anything they'd like to say about the medical marijuana resolution, please come up.
I have a clarifying question there. There will be a second opening for people to talk about other things before you vote on resolutions?
No, it will be afterward.
I need information about some of the resolutions before you vote. So, I...
Oh, so, when can he ask them?
They have to be before the resolutions.
No, 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 I'm asking the borough attorney.
I'm sorry, what?
Um, we're, we were going to limit today, this part of the discussion to the medical marijuana so that we can try to stay close to the agenda timing, but Mr. Spool has some questions on other things on the agenda. Can he come at the end of this before we vote on the consent agenda?
Sure.
Okay, so Peter, let's, let's let the medical marijuana go and then just stick around for the end. Okay, please state your name and address.
Tara Canavara, 369, I'm sorry, 361 Crowls Road, Highland Park. Um, as we know, the opiate epidemic is out of control and a lot of times that starts with pain medication. And a lot of people that I know who have been approved for medical marijuana have been able to reduce their use by up to 95%. Therefore, not needing those opiates. So, I'm all for a dispensary here in Highland Park. I think it would be great for our residents and also for our taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Tara.
Hi, Mary Botian.
Mary, speak closer to the mic, please.
Mary Botian.
And your address? Yeah.
709 Madison Avenue.
No, somebody's not hearing you. She can't, she can't hear.
You gotta be right up on the mic. Mary Botian?
Yeah.
Mary Botian, 709 Madison Avenue. In a nutshell, a medical marijuana applicant came in last Tuesday. They said they would also sell recreational THC products if the state changes the law. Council approved applicant by Friday. Some specifics, the applicant presented for approximately 20 minutes. They had a map of available storefronts from century 21. They offered Highland Park some money. They would need eight parking places, up to 2,500 square feet, and they would operate seven days a week. When asked if their storefront would include transition to recreational THC products, they said yes. They said they would sell recreational pot products if the law changes, claiming otherwise they will not be able to compete. They indicated this is the business model that they have followed in the other states in which they operate and have recreationalized. They claimed that if they do not sell THC, they will go bankrupt or have to move to another town. Clearly, the applicant is not just a medical marijuana applicant and the council is aware of this. Within only three days, without any public knowledge or discussion, a draft resolution was created attempting to enter Highland Park into the marijuana industry. For residents such as myself who are against Highland Park selling recreational pot, this is not acceptable. Only a few weeks ago, we went through an election in which a huge complaint was that decisions were being made behind closed doors and without any public knowledge or discussion. It seems that we are revisiting those issues. We are not ready to establish a relationship with the marijuana industry in any way, shape, or form. There are no protections against recreational pot sales, no buffer zones from schools or daycares, no buffer zones from residential uses, no requirement for extra liability insurance. There are no guidelines whatsoever in place. The marijuana industry is enormously complex and far-reaching. In the spirit of full disclosure, it would also kindly be appropriate for council members to indicate if they have any ties to the marijuana industry, financial investments or otherwise, as well as to this particular applicant, its parent company, or its affiliates, unless there is some legal reason preventing you from such disclosure. With respect to this particular applicant, we should not even consider signing on with a company that says, and I quote, "You do not need to vet us." Only a few weeks ago, for example, the parent company of this applicant, Holistic Industries, was called on the carpet for their employment practices related to their part-time $13 an hour positions. I quote here, "The company's employment offers appear to be telling its employees that if they are busted by the federal government, the company has no liability or monetary responsibility to them." The employment law expert who publicly made these statements continued, and I quote, "Given the profits being made in this industry, it is disturbing that marijuana growers would throw their low-wage workers under the bus if they were accused of violations of federal law." He also stated that Holistic did not respond whether managers and executives are required to sign a similar clause. So, let's take a big step back. It is premature to present this resolution tonight and I hope you will put it aside. We have commissions for many issues in Highland Park. Perhaps we should consider a well-balanced, well-intentioned marijuana commission. Thank you.
I, I just want to say one thing, Mary. The resolution throughout mentions medical marijuana. The municipality does have options to, um, for it to, um, look into zoning or other preventions of recreational marijuana, should we all decide that that is what we want?
I'm Kenneth Cressel. I live at 120 South Second Avenue in Highland Park. I also am a psychologist with a practice here. I can only speak to the general value of medical marijuana. The FDA has approved the use of medical marijuana for a number of very important medical conditions, particularly nausea and vomiting connected with cancer chemotherapy, epileptic seizures and too severe forms of epilepsy. Medical marijuana is also been shown to be very effective in managing severe pain and reducing the use of opioids. I think that was also said. It's, uh, nationally, national polls show that more than 80% of Americans favor the use of medical marijuana. So, overall, uh, there are obviously issues to be discussed by the council and others, but as a medically associated, uh, adjunct, it is clearly, uh, a very useful one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Long Bo Yu, uh, living, uh, 7001 Gabriel Land, Highland Park. So, um, I'm here, you know, to represent my family and some, uh, of my dear friends and families from Chinese community. We are deeply concerned about the coming resolution of opening a medical marijuana shop in Highland Park. As we all know, uh, Highland Park is a family-like small town where everyone knows everyone. All of us have enjoyed it very much and would like to keep it that way. Also, our little town has been facing some physical challenges in recent years. Opening a marijuana shop is not a sustainable way to solve the problem. In our view, even worse, it will likely attract people who would disturb the community safety of our neighborhood and possibly pose danger to the community, especially to the kids and seniors wa- walking to the street. It's hard for me to imagine that people who have problems with drug abuse or, you know, those who, uh, have serious medical conditions will regularly come, come for marijuana in our family or rented town where kids and residents walking to schools and, uh, to the main street. With that kind of environment, families will be driven away and likely it will be, it will further deteriorate the physical difficulties in our town. We strongly feel that a marijuana shop, even medical marijuana shop in Highland Park is not going to benefit the community as a whole and urge, uh, you to stop the progress or postpone the resolution. Thank you for your time and careful considerations.
Thank you.
My name is Dr. Karen Ebell Avery. I live at 402 Graham Street in Highland Park. I am a physician practicing in central New Jersey for the last 15 years. I am a mother and a resident here of dear Highland Park. Let me state for the record, I am not against medical marijuana. I am concerned, however, about Sunrise Organic Wellness's goals in our town. In the 1940s and 50s, Big Tobacco told us that tobacco products were safe, using doctors' images to do so. We now know they were wrong. In the 1990s, when I was training as a doctor, Big Pharma told us that opioids and narcotics were not addictive when one had true pain. We now know they were wrong. Currently, Big Cannabis is telling us that recreational adult use is safe. Let's not allow Highland Park to be a proving ground to show they are wrong too. Studies are emerging regarding the harmful personal health and public health effects of widespread recreational adult marijuana use after experience in other states and countries. This is a matter of health and safety for our community. Why are you rushing to approve Sunrise to become part of our community? It seems like you deliberated publicly more over plastic bags. Thank you.
Yes, good evening. My name is Alona Rizzo and I live in Exeter, 11 Exeter Street in Highland Park. And I'm actually here to support Ms. Mary Botan who, um, was kind enough to inform me and I think some of our, um, other friends here that were not even aware of what was going on with this marijuana dispensary. So, um, the impact of this decision on our community and our children is seriously at stake here and should be taken into consideration with much, much more care. I have no issues, again, I need to clarify that with medical marijuana because obviously if it's medically necessary, that is absolutely fine with me. I have no objections. But, we should certainly include restrictions. If Highland Park wants to, um, put a resolution, make a decision on this, uh, specific dispensary, um, we should certainly include restrictions on the THC sales no matter how bankrupt the dispensary may go if this does not happen to, uh, them. And at this point, the well-being of our residents and largely our children in our school district, um, should come first and the decision should certainly not be based on income to the town. I mean, is that what the world is coming to? Our society is already half-broken. And I think us as parents, I mean, I'm considering myself and I think many parents here who have children in the school district. We teach our children all our lifetime. We say, day in, day out, we teach them to go down the right path and not go down the drug path, whether it's marijuana or whatever else it is. So, our, um, uh, our society is already broken and we are just fueling the fire by accepting such application without seriously considering restrictions. Obviously, I 100% disagree as a parent and I do not want my children to be driven into the belief that this has been made so easy and it is okay to do. So, please, I think the town also should be more transparent. As, and as Mary mentioned, I would like to just reaffirm that I think this kind of decision should be based on more public knowledge, more, um, residential involvement before the resolution is made.
So, so I just want to be clear, you are in favor of medical marijuana and against recreational marijuana? Thank you.
Hi, Dan Stern Cardinal, 221 Harper Street. Uh, I'm very much in favor of this resolution. You should absolutely pass it. We should get a medical cannabis dispensary in Highland Park. Uh, but to frame the discussion a little bit differently, I want to, um, share a quote from, uh, this is John Erlichman, who's one of Richard Nixon's chief political advisers, strategists. He's famous for going down during Watergate. This is a quote that he gave in an interview in the 90s. He said, uh, in this direct quote, "The Nixon campaign in 1968 and the Nixon White House after that had two enemies, the anti-war left and black people. You understand what I'm saying? We knew we couldn't make it illegal to be either against the war or black, but by getting the public to associate the hippies with marijuana and blacks with heroin and then criminalizing both heavily, we could disrupt those communities. We could arrest their leaders, raid their homes, break up their meetings, and vilify them night after night on the evening news. Did we know we were lying about the drugs? Of course we did." The entire reason we're having this discussion in the context we are, as cannabis is some other thing that we have to have, like, special permission from the state to bring to Highland Park, is because Richard Nixon needed a reason to go after his political enemies and scheduled cannabis as a Schedule I drug instead of a Schedule II or III where it belongs. That's the whole context for this discussion. Everything else is a post hoc rationalization for that political decision made in the early 1970s. So, we need to make sure we're all on the same page with that context while we're having this discussion. Now, since lots of states have begun, uh, legalizing both recreational and medical cannabis, there have been a whole lot of studies on the effects of these places, uh, on, uh, things like crime rates, public health in the area. Uh, almost all of those studies show no association between medical dispensaries and crime rates. There are a handful that show either a weak negative or a weak positive correlation. There was one big study out of LA that showed a very strong negative correlation between dispensaries and crime, which is to say, when there were more dispensaries, there was less crime. But the single best study was a 20-year longitudinal study looking at 58 counties in California from 1996 to 2016. And I'm gonna quote from the abstract of this study. The whole thing is about 40 pages long, but I can show it to you if you want. Uh, the, uh, this is from the abstract. "The results suggest no relationship between county laws that legally permit dispensaries and reported violent crime. We find a negative and significant relationship between dispensary allowances and property crime rates," which is to say, there's no relationship with violent crime and there's a negative association with property crime. Now, um, I'm gonna be that guy and show you figures because here's the number of dispensaries that go up over the 20 years of the study. And then here we have the violent crime rate, the...
Dan, I have to interrupt you a second.
And then the 15 is up.
Yeah, yeah, I'm on the 15. Yeah, I'll come up on the fifteen, yeah.
Yeah, we're coming on the...
Mayor, may I make a motion to extend the public discussion?
Thank you, that's what I was going to ask for.
Till all the speakers have, at least all speakers have spoken once before anybody speaks twice.
Second. Okay, thank you.
What I want to show you, and if anyone wants to see these later, you can see that the trend lines for the counties with and without the dispensaries are identical. So there's no association, there's no divergence, once the dispensaries come into play, between the violent or property crime rates across this twenty-year longitudinal study, which is to say the presence or absence of dispensary unnet has no impact on crime. Now, just question directly for the Borough Council. So right now, if you're a cannabis patient, you need to go, the closest dispensary is in Woodbridge. Does anyone think that cannabis is more dangerous than opioids? Anyone think that it's more dangerous than alcohol? Is anyone proposing any changes to what Rite Aid can dispense or sell?
So, Dan, I'm sorry to do this to you, but if you want to finish, you can get to the end of the line. We're allowed three minutes, you know, for each person.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Ruth Byer, 228 South Third Avenue. And I think that the most important thing to think about right now is that there needs to be more discussion. So I'm echoing what Mary said and I think I would like to see the resolution tabled, if at all possible, for tonight because I think there's a lot of people, it's a hot topic, and a lot of things that need to be discussed. And then I just want to read out a letter from Dr. Miller, our resident, well-known doctor in town, to the mayor and town council. Regrettably, I am unable to attend the town meeting, but would like to share my thoughts about the proposed marijuana dispensary in Highland Park. Although medicinal marijuana can be very useful and beneficial to patients who truly need it, I do not feel that it is essential to have a dispensary in Highland Park for the sole purpose of gaining tax revenue. If the New Jersey law passes to legalize recreational marijuana and this dispensary then starts to sell marijuana products in town, Highland Park will become known as a place to go for all your marijuana needs. I don't think that is wise for our town to have that type of reputation. As a physician who has lived in town since nineteen eighty-six and has practiced in medicine since nineteen eighty-six and then Highland Park from two thousand until the present, I have treated and cared for thousands of Highland Park residents. The number of patients that would have benefited from medicinal marijuana over the past thirty-four years are probably a fraction of one percent. For those patients, they could still access a clinic outside of Highland Park. More importantly, I'm concerned about the eventual conversion of a medicinal marijuana dispensary into a retail recreational marijuana store. I have seen the effects of chronic use of marijuana on the lives of many patients over the years, especially when the use starts in the teenage years. I'm just going to stop there because it's a little bit long.
Okay, thank you.
And just add one of my own sentiments. I think I'm worried about the effects on our adolescents. I think the children are what we really need to think about and if recreational marijuana comes into town, we are going to see it in the schools.
So, so again, I want to be clear, we're talking about medical marijuana and your concern is with recreational.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Could you, if you don't mind letting someone who hasn't spoken yet speak?
I have one tiny comment I forgot before and it's my IQ. There are some ladies here and residents that are a little bit shy to come up and talk. So if I could just ask them to raise their hands who disagree with the recreational marijuana availability in Highland Park.
Recreation.
Okay, so you're all, you're all against recreational marijuana. Okay, thank you.
Yahoo.
You can move it up if you need to.
All right, thank you. Yahoo, I live in Lambians Court. I think what Dan, I try to follow up what Dan says.
I'm sorry, could you say where you live again, please?
Lambians Court, near the river.
Lambians, okay.
So I want to follow up what Dan's talked about and what other people talked about. I think there is missing a point that we're not talking about the pros and cons of medical marijuana or recreational marijuana. We're actually talking about why do we need a medical marijuana dispenser in Highland Park? This is the pros and cons we need to talk about. And what's the benefit of it and what's the cost of it when it, related to it? So it's really not about, we're not talking about, we have a medical marijuana facility in here, we're talking about to remove it. That's what you're talking about, all the benefits or the non-benefits or nothing about it. But we're talking about why do we need it here? So if you have a compelling reason that we do need it here, then we want to hear it about. And I think for most of the, the parents here, we're concerned about the children mostly. And Highland Park is a very small school district. If you open a medical marijuana pile or whatever it is called, dispenser, it will be very close to the school, any school, right? We have like three, four schools around here, so it will be very close to school.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Nela Caruso. I'm from ninety-one Lawrence Avenue. I am a mother of four children, one of whom is just about to be a teenager. I, I walk everywhere in town. I don't have a license, I don't drive. And in that way, I'm very similar to our large disabled community in town, many of whom have special medical needs and can't just hop in a car or they'll have to get a cab or they'll have to take a bus. And I have taken a bus all the way out to Costco and found, once I got there, that you can't walk back or get on a bus back. You'd have to cross a dangerous street. It was wonderful. And I want to tell you all that the choice of cannabis versus opiates is not an academic one. Before medical marijuana was legal in this state, I had a now dearly departed grandfather-in-law, Frank Demattius. He suffered with absolutely crippling arthritis and he had a few heart conditions, so they gave him the maximum amount of opiates that they dared to give him. And one day, I wasn't married then, I was at his table, having dinner with his family, and he reaches across the table, for some reason thinking I was the one he could talk to about this, and said, "Nela, do you know where I can get some pot?" This is the most law-abiding man I have ever known. And he was begging me, who he didn't know doesn't even jaywalk, to get him pot. I decided, well, I didn't know where to get it. So he died in, well, he died in two thousand and eight. He died drugged out of his mind on opiates because they start, they basically put him in hospice care, gave him so much that he, he was hallucinating at the end. We didn't get to say goodbye to him as a person. And all for the want of something that would make him either hurt less or simply not care that he was hurting. I feel that we need to think about the people who can't represent themselves. And as a mother of four children, I do care whether or not my kids start taking drugs or anything else, but honestly, I care a heck of a lot more whether they decide to start drinking. We've lost family members to drunk drivers. I've never lost a family member to pot. And yet, one is completely legal and the rest are not. That's really all I had to say.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Matthew Hirsch, 333 Fulton Avenue. I just wanted to thank the council for considering this resolution and just wanted to echo Dan Stern Cardinal's support for your hopeful support of this, of this resolution, which should be clear that, my understanding is that this resolution is simply a green light for the, for the retailer to apply for their state license. It's not an approval of, of a dispensary in town. State law requires that a prospective dispensary must receive at least, at least cursory support from the municipality in which it's trying to, to open. But I would just encourage, also, while we've talked about a lot of issues here, I want to just remind everybody of the public health benefits. This law is not new. The medical marijuana has been legal in New Jersey for ten years almost, but yet we only have six dispensaries. Governor Phil Murphy recently signed into law the Honig Act, which opens the patient population by more than fifty thousand, more than what it was. And, and just to remind folks that, you know, recognized uses for medical marijuana include seizures, glaucoma, muscle spasticity, neurological conditions, bowel conditions like Crohn's disease, HIV/AIDS and cancer, and if chronic pain, nausea, and, and any terminal illness if there's less than twelve months to live. We mentioned the patient population here in Highland Park. While that's hard to quantify as far as residents, we have two major hospitals nearby and any number of, of, of medical practices in, in the New Brunswick and Middlesex County area. So I think that Highland Park is ripe for this, for this type of retail presence. I should note that I am, as a parent of three young children, ten and under, that I'm fully in support of recreational, of legalized recreational marijuana too, but that's a discussion for another day. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Denise May Byer, 314 Wayne Street. I'm here to speak in favor of having a medical marijuana dispensary. I think that having a medical marijuana dispensary will benefit the town. As Matt Hirsch noted, we are close to medical facilities and people could benefit from it. I'm a parent of two children. I'm a retired law enforcement officer. If you ask me about recreational, you know, I may be wobbly a little bit, but having seen the injustices that were wrought in the criminal justice system as a result of the illegality of marijuana, I think I'd probably come down on the side of favoring legalization fully, taxing the hell out of it and making sure it's heavily regulated and probably not selling it to anybody under twenty-five. But that's, I'm not a dictator. But I am in favor of the dispensary. I would hope that if this dispensary is approved, that there could be a discussion about what would happen were a full legalization of recreational marijuana implemented, because I certainly would not want to see children near it and I, I think that, you know, any kind of sales to children, any kind of suggestion that children should go near it, I'm not in favor of that. But I am definitely in favor of a dispensary and I would like to make sure that if it is approved at this point, that it's fully vetted with the community and everything is transparent, because if there's any hint of non-transparency, that's, that's not, that's a whole other issue that is not okay.
So if I could just summarize to make sure I'm clear on what you said, you're in support of a medical marijuana dispensary and if we were to think about recreational, we would also want to have a lot of public input on that?
Yeah.
And I think I heard you say that.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we, we here in Highland Park are not in control over whether or not it becomes legalized.
Right.
That's up to our state legislature, which seems to be in a conniption with itself about whether that's going to happen or not. But I would want to see that there would be some discussion. In terms of medical marijuana, I think that the, it has benefited a lot of people and I think that having a dispensary close to medical facilities would be a really good thing.
Okay, thank you.
Michelle May, South Adelaide Avenue. I've been a resident of Highland Park for twenty-seven years. I have two adult children that I have raised here. I am raising my ten-year-old grandson here also. Some days, I wish that my daughter had access to medical marijuana instead of the mess that she got into with illegal drugs. She wouldn't have had the legal problems that she's had, she wouldn't have had loss of time with her child, she wouldn't have lost of time with her family. I am one hundred percent in favor of a medical marijuana dispensary here in Highland Park. I think it would benefit so many people and a lot of you know that I broke my leg almost two years ago and I am in constant pain every single day. I wake up in the morning, I go to bed and I'm in pain with my leg. Not that I'm saying I don't want to use marijuana or anything like that, but I'm not against it. I weaned myself off three opioids that the doctor sent me home with. I could have kept taking them, no problem, but I didn't want that in my household and I didn't want it around my kids, I didn't want it around my grandson. I want it to be fully functional for my child. Since my daughter has been back home with us, she has lost eight of her friends and rehab roommates, whatever, to opioids and heroin. And it's heartbreaking that these young kids are getting into that. I'm not really in favor of recreational marijuana, but my mom also just started using CBD oil, which I think is going to help her because she lives with two different kinds of arthritis and she's also in pain a lot, all the time. So I think it's a very good idea for being that we are so close to such hospitals and medical facilities that we have this available to people who not necessarily would be able to get to it when they need it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing your story. I know it was probably hard.
Diane Ray, sixty-eight Donaldson Street. I just have one question. Do we have a map? Do we have a zone that says where it would be allowed?
Medical marijuana, I believe, is allowed throughout the seed, the business district.
It would be a retail business permitted in the central business district or the commercial district.
What about the one thousand?
Oh, it would have to still adhere to the one thousand.
Do we have that map?
Yes, we...
We, we have a map, yes.
And, and they were looked at and shared with the people that are interested in opening a facilities to make sure that they would not fall into any of the zones.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
Okay, Dan, and then we're going to call it off for this part of the discussion except for Peter.
Thank you for letting me come back. Just a couple, Dan Stern Cardinal, Harper Street. Just a couple of quick things I want to mention. First is the need for parking and the size, twenty-five hundred square feet. The number of parking spaces and the square footage at the meeting last week was mentioned as a maximum, but they also said that street parking would probably be fine and they could go down to like, I forget, it was like sixteen hundred square feet or so, whatever it was, smaller. That it might be located near a school or a daycare. We, I think we established earlier that things like alcohol are more dangerous than cannabis and there's, Highland Park Liquor and Wine is one block down Woodbridge Avenue from Irving School. So if we're not, if we're okay with that, then we should be okay with this being wherever.
That was grandfathered in West...
And then last point, well, then you should go after the liquor stores. The last point, last major point I want to make is on access, specifically that there's actually a shortage of medical cannabis in New Jersey right now. So there are patients that cannot get the medication that they are legally allowed to access because there are only, I think, mad, was it six dispensaries in the whole state? Yet there just aren't enough places and a large enough supply of medication so that everybody could get, I mean, this is the equivalent of like there being a shortage of insulin and you couldn't go get insulin that you need. It's, it's the same thing. So I mean, just on a, just a pure access grounds, you need to have more dispensaries in New Jersey and being a centrally located place next to a city where there's lots of healthcare activity. Highland Park is a natural place to have a dispensary. And I also just want to say that I'm a parent of a young child. I'm sure by the time she gets to high school, there will still be cannabis in high schools because there is a lot of it right now and it will be harder to get under a legalized framework. That's why there's cannabis on the black market, but not alcohol on the black market because it's legal, it's taxed, and it's regulated. So there's lots of good health access. We didn't even talk about the economics of this, but there's lots of good arguments for this. Vote yes on this resolution, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Peter, you're up.
Hi, I'm Peter Spool. I live at one four six Graham Street. And I have questions actually for the council on four of the agenda items, item ten, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-four. The attached documents that purport to explain them don't do a very good job. They're quite sparse. We're leaving out clearly important information, so I want to clarify and I think we don't need answers. So number ten, if I'm not mistaken, is about floating a bond with a guarantee from the county. And it's for capital equipment, but it doesn't say what kind of capital equipment.
Okay, so we're going to ask Phil to answer that question.
Let me, let me ask all the questions about it. There are only three.
Okay.
Capital, what kind of capital equipment, for what purpose? And it mentions no dollar amount at all. And this is a bond, let's be clear, yes?
It is an agreement to participate...
It is an agreement to participate in a bond issuance with the county municipal, the Middlesex County Improvement Authorities bond to buy vehicles through the state-identified contracting process where the public bidding has already been done. The vehicles are a Ford, I believe it's a Ford Escort Hybrid, a Bolt, which is an electric vehicle, an F-250 diesel heavy-duty pickup truck for DPW, and a Tahoe vehicle for the fire department. And the dollar amounts are yet to be specified, because the vehicles have not yet been ordered, so they haven't been specked out.
Okay. A suggestion for the future, if you have that amount of detail, it'd be good to share that with public in the document that you attach to future agendas.
I can tell you that I raised exactly the same question. However, this is also second reading, and the first reading, the information was there. But I asked the same question, where is Exhibit A and where is Exhibit B?
Yeah, it shouldn't have been. I appreciate it.
I agree with you.
Okay, good. The second two are about redevelopment. I mean, it gives block and lot numbers, but as general members of the general public...
Which numbers?
Numbers 19 and 20. They both have to do with redevelopment. So it does mention block and lot numbers, but as members of the general public, we generally have no idea where those really are attached.
Number, yes.
So I'd be curious about that, and I'd be curious what the reasons for doing these right now is.
Go ahead, Susie.
Sure. Thanks, Peter. Number 19, Resilience Authorizing Preparation of Redevelopment Plan. That is a project we've been working on with our borough planner, LRK, to do a redevelopment study of the Cleveland Avenue corridor. There's a developer that's approached us, Mr. Stern. He owns property there, and we had two public meetings where we discussed it, and he showed us some plans for that.
Was this for the, for the school?
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly. So this is going to authorize our planner to go to the next step of that plan.
Okay.
All right.
And it includes a traffic study, is that right?
It, a separate traffic study that we will choose the party who will do the study, and they will pay for it.
Yeah.
Is how I understand it, because we were not satisfied with the traffic study that they provided.
Can you elaborate a little bit about what the real purpose, then, of it is? I mean, what kind of results of that study should we expect?
Of a traffic study?
Of the traffic study and the redevelopment.
Sure. So one of the, so a couple things. He wants to have a few hundred kids maximum at that school, and how will that affect the traffic in the neighborhood? So they claim that there's going to be busing. It's a private school, and most of the students are from out of town, but many are from within town. So will the students in town be bused? Will they be driven to school? Will they ride bicycles? Will they walk? What routes are they likely to take? What routes might we recommend that they take? Are there any routes that need to be repaired to be safe for the school? Should they pay for a crossing guard at a certain intersection? And also, since they have buses, how many buses will they be having? At what time will these buses dropping off and picking up? And what's the route of the bus? So we found some flaws in the original traffic study.
All right. So does that cover both 19 and 20, or is that just 19?
Nope. Nope, just 19.
Okay.
20 is for the area on the avenue where the old gun shop was.
Okay.
That property, there are two small lots behind that. I don't know if there's a fourth one. Is it also the cleaners or?
I think it's, I think there's four properties altogether.
Okay. So there's four properties altogether there. We are, we have been doing a site remediation on those properties, and we want to pursue that some more.
So is there some thought about what that, that spot would be used for?
Not as yet. We don't even, we don't have a developer established right now, so, but this is all part of it in order for us to clean it up, get a really good idea of if there are any contaminants still left there. We're, I think, in Phase 3 now of the cleanup, which includes, the cleanup, by the way, includes a lot of investigation. So we're in, I think, Phase 3 of that, and that's all paid for through hazardous site remediation grant monies from the state.
Yeah, okay. So going back to the one on Cleveland Avenue, just for an instant. So the only, you say Cleveland Avenue corridor, but it's all about the effects of this possible girl's school.
Well, it's not, so that's, that's a good question. Thank you. We started because of the proposal for the girl's school, but we realized that there's a lot of miscellaneous types of business along that corridor, and then it switches into residential. So we're going to do a study of that to include that area.
And there is some other empty land there, I mean, right?
Yes. Yes. And there's other, other types of businesses. There's office building, the medical building, and other businesses.
All right. Well, thank you. And lastly, number 24 has to do with disbursement of funds from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, but what are the funds to be used for?
Okay, so right now, they are segregated in a trust fund for affordable housing related to the property that was built on, off of River Road up by where the Seneca was. And so I believe, did you speak with the, or Josh, did you, one of the two of you, where the funds would, right now, they're tied up, and we can't do anything with them because of that particular property that is on River Road. But this will allow us to, it's something like $147,000 left, Ed?
No, I think you're referring to the historic one.
Yeah.
He's referring to the affordable housing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I can comment on the affordable housing. The borough last month had its affordable housing plan approved through the year 2025. Part of that is allowing the borough to collect affordable housing development fees from commercial development that occurs in the borough. We've already collected money from some other folks who have done some of the development. So this establishes a separate trust fund where the money collected will have to be used for affordable housing purposes, such as rehabilitating homes, having an administrative agent keep an eye on all of the affordable units in town, and come up with programs for down payment assistance and condominium assistance, and different programs that are a part of our program between now and 2025.
So does this include the possibility of additional affordable housing using those funds?
Yes, it does, because we'll have another obligation in the next round from 2025 to 2035. So this allows us to begin to put money aside for the affordable housing obligation in the future and spend it now for something that might be needed.
So do you have some idea of what the amount of the funds available now that are asking to be dispersed?
No. The funds right now, we're just starting the affordable housing development fee for commercial development, so that will begin having money generated. Right now, we've had a few contributions that have been made. I would guess we maybe have $50,000 that we'll start this trust fund with.
If that much.
Is that just a guess?
If that much.
Right.
Because it's only one unit, I think that...
Right.
How will it be decided how that money actually gets used, and what body will decide that?
Well, the, we have a plan that's been approved, and the plan has different elements to it. For example, we have to work with developers to market affordable housing units to the region that the, that the community is in. So if we have to spend money for that purpose, we would come back to council, and council would authorize the expenditure of money for that purpose. If we are rehabilitating properties through the county program, which we've been doing now for a while, and we need to put some money, $10,000, let's say, for rehabilitation, we would come back with a recommendation to the mayor and council to spend that money. So all the money has to be authorized, just like any expenditure, but it has to be recommended probably by our administrative agent, or by our planner, or by someone who is working with the program.
Could some of that money potentially be used for grants that are granted by the municipality?
Well, it could be, it could be used as, let's say, matching funds or a contribution towards a group home. Yes, you could do stuff like that, as long as we get credit for whatever units are built or whatever program we support. It has to be related to affordable housing, but that's pretty flexible, so yes, that could happen.
Okay. And so let me just make sure I understand. So this will be a municipal affordable housing trust fund?
It's a municipal affordable housing trust fund.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Peter. Clerk, could you please report on advertising the lease ordinance for the capital equipment improvement and financing program of the MCIA for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, approving and authorizing the entering into execution and delivery of a lease agreement with the Middlesex County Improvement Authority relating to the issuance of county guaranteed capital equipment and improvement revenue bonds was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title and affidavit's publication or file. The ordinance was posted and made available, but public inspection is required by law.
Okay, may I have a motion to take up the ordinance? There goes my voice. May I have a motion to take up the ordinance?
Do we have a motion to take up the ordinance?
A final reading by title. Thank you.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Is there any public hearing on this?
Do we have?
No. Okay. May I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
I'd just like to say that this is merely a resolution saying that the borough would work with them, but specifically in the state law and also in the agreement, it says that they, number one, will have to get their certificate of registration from the state, and they'll have to meet with every requirement of the borough. In the state regulations, to get their certificate of registration, they actually have to show that they have gotten all their permits, including...
You're voting on the wrong thing.
What are we voting on?
You're voting on the MCIA.
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, since we had that discussion, I felt it was, that's what we were talking about.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
I just want to say, I think this is the first time that we're going electric with these, with these cars.
We are going electric.
So, so three cheers for sustainability and yes.
Three years we've been trying to get electric. We finally got it.
May I have a resolution verifying the willingness of the Borough of Highland Park to host an alternate, an alternate treatment center for a medical marijuana dispensary as authorized by the New Jersey Compassionate Use Medical Marijuana Act, NJSA 2461-1.
That's second. That's second. So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
So I've stated before at this council that I support the sale of doctor-recommended medical marijuana. Although the Sunrise Wellness application, which is the subject of this resolution on the council agenda tonight, is for a medical marijuana dispensary, Sunrise Wellness has made it clear that it will sell recreational-use THC recreational marijuana from this medical marijuana dispensary should recreational marijuana become legal in the state of New Jersey. That, I believe, would be detrimental to the well-being of our Highland Park community, given that the resolution that is before the council tonight for consideration does not provide any restrictions on the sale of recreational-use marijuana, should it become legalized in the future. And given that there has not been, in my opinion, the requisite amount of public discourse regarding the subject of welcoming the marijuana industry within Highland Park's municipal borders, in the interest of the well-being of our Highland Park community, I vote no on this resolution.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
We have had quite a number of discussions tonight about the medical dispensary, that application that is before us, that they would, they're considering Highland Park as one of the towns that they would like to open up a medical dispensary. I vote yes for a medical dispensary with the caveat that should marijuana become illegal, I mean, legal next year, that there will be additional discussion about should we, the residents of Highland Park, have a recreational facility here. So my vote is yes for the medical dispensary, and to have an amendment or have something put into the resolution that we're going to pass, that we'll have an additional discussion about recreational, should recreational become legal in the state, and also to have a lot of community input if that situation does arise. So yes on medical dispensary.
Councilman George?
Now I'll say it. Sorry for that, people. I was just so excited about actually getting electric vehicles. As I said before, they will have to obtain a certificate of registration, which requires that they show that they have gone through all application procedures applicable to the town, including planning board approval is necessary. More so than this, this application is for, as you may know, if you've been following the issue or reading about it, the state has initially said they would authorize in this new round of ATC's, alternate treatment centers, also called dispensaries, up to 100, then they cut it down to 16. Now, I believe it's two in the north, two in the central, and two in the south districts. And this is for Sunrise and its parent company to get in on the site selection for Central. It's not even the process for them to be allowed to do it. But more so than that, since the late 80s and 90s, when I did a lot of volunteer work with Vietnam veterans in the eastern district of Pennsylvania prisons, to the fact that I prosecute probably, as of today, as a matter of fact, seven DWI's, five of which were drug-involved. I am aware of the problems, and I've been working through the Prosecutors Association with regard to the legalization of marijuana and the fact that it, the bills were completely inadequate and inappropriate to deal with the question of sentencing, resentencing panels and release of people under both the criminal and DWI laws. So I'm on the fence with a lot of the implications, although the general theory of recreational marijuana sounds good. I have too much going with regard to the impact. However, let's be clear, this is simply to say that a medical marijuana dispensary, with all of the protections that are already in place, including mandatory prescription, including the screening that's required, the waiting times, the methodology of filling prescriptions, as well as the more compassionate, which is the name of the act, the compassionate requirements, I vote yes as to this. There will be more discussion if and when recreational ever becomes legal. Those of you who are at the meeting, members of the public, I specifically asked two questions. Question number one, if recreational marijuana is legalized by the state, would you be involved in selling it? And the answer was, yes, we would. And the second question was, if Highland Park said recreational marijuana was not permitted under any opt-out provision of any state law, what would you do? And they said, we would leave.
So your vote is?
As I said, my vote is yes.
Councilman Hale?
I've written long before about the difficulty of legalization and some of the issues. It is a complex issue that brings out passions in many directions. Medical marijuana is an issue that I think is fundamentally different, and this is a medical marijuana question. And I think that, at the end of the day, this is about medical marijuana. It is not about adult use. It is not about legalization, and therefore, I very much support this resolution.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Last Tuesday, I actually couldn't attend the meeting. I was out of town. But, so I will be abstaining on the resolution. But if I was there, my vote would be no, due to the fact that there wasn't much public input at all. And a work session is not a public meeting. From the, I don't have anything much written down, so my mind is like going. From an industry standpoint, for these applicants, they also need, so by trade outside of council, I am a banker, there are four banks in the state of New Jersey that are giving letters. They also, outside of this resolution, they need letters as to where you're going to bank, because it is still illegal on the federal level. Banks won't, they won't bank these medical marijuana industry, out-of-state industries as well either. So they need a letter from the banks, and we do due diligence like you wouldn't believe it. I have toured facilities. I have, I think I received secondhand smoke from some of these facilities. But outside of that, due diligence is a big part of these applicants. They're operating and neighboring downtown Philly. I would have took a train, if we had enough time, to tour their facility, to see, is this a good fit for our downtown? I would have wanted to see their corporate structure chart. I would have, as a government entity, requested from the Philadelphia Health Department if they had any pending violations against them. This, and I also want to go back to say that I am in favor of medical and recreation marijuana here in Highland Park. But what I'm in favor of is not what you guys are in favor of. So that's why I would have liked to have a public meeting, and while the state has released this round of license very fast, extremely fast, we weren't prepared at this time. And we have the bank that I work at, with, mind you, it's four banks. One is way south Jersey. We're headquartered in North Jersey, and there's two in between. We charge $2,500 just to give that letter, just to give that letter. These companies are not going to go bankrupt if they can give us $2,500 to sign off on a letter. Well, you don't even know if you're going to get the license or not. Also, they're also going back to that, this is a cash-intensive business as well, too. We have to make sure that security and our police are aware as well, too. All of that goes into a public meeting. All of that goes into the social aspects of this medical marijuana facility as well, too, because as they stated, recreation is one of their goals here in town. And I think we could have done a better job at communicating this applicant in our downtown, and I would have liked to hear more than just the emails I received today, when it was shared in a Facebook group. I would have liked to actually hear face-to-face more issues than your limited 15 minutes that we had to extend. Whether, and my vote could have went differently. So I'm quite surprised that we actually got this on the agenda. Another person in town actually came to my job and was inter, asked me what, where's the town? I said, I have no idea. I only know what one person thinks, because that one person was vocal about it. I have no idea. So I think right now, unfortunately, it just came too fast. We had so many other issues that were going on that we couldn't really hold public meetings. Neighboring East Brunswick held multiple public meetings on the same topic. So unfortunately, I have to abstain, but I thank some of the residents here that did do the due diligence on this applicant. We're not talking in general. We're talking about this one applicant. And this applicant, I feel, was a low-hanging fruit. They also are applying in another part of New Jersey as well, and if we pick the right applicant, this can be a win-win for us as far as our tax dollars. So unfortunately, I have to abstain, Joan, and that's my comment.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
So a couple things. We did get some information on who the proprietors were, who the consultants are of this. And we didn't do a group think about it, but I know individually, I looked up the company and who the gentleman was who presented to us, and the businesses that he currently owns, the businesses that his wife currently owns, and there are three other proprietors that are minority-owned group that are going to be running this potential facility. We've had a very short window to respond to this. The state announced this round of applications for new licenses just a couple of weeks ago, and the applications are due in, I don't know what day, the 11th, the 19th?
21st.
21st. So it's, we're being asked a quick turnaround. Everybody would like more time on things. However, to address this resolution, this resolution is very specific to what's at hand today, which is this one organization, Sunrise Wellness, this round of applications, which is, you know, again, due August 21. It makes no commitment to any future applications. It absolutely makes no reference to recreational marijuana. That is an entire other industry. That is an entire other discussion. While there's an opportunity here to potentially open a new business, I do not believe that our decision is solely for the dollars, in my personal opinion. Medical marijuana, which is legal in the state of New Jersey, is an opportunity for people that are ill to get some relief. Here we are in between three major hospitals, Robert Wood Johnson, St. Peters, JFK. People that are going to those hospitals, going to doctors nearby those hospitals, travel through our town all the time. We are in a prime location to service those people and our own residents. Like Nayla Caruso mentioned, she walks a lot. So do I. I had a chance to interview a friend of mine who has a recommendation from a doctor and uses the Woodbridge facility. I'll tell you how it works. But when there, he said the last time he was there, he saw an old lady who could barely walk with her assistant, who drove her there and helped her walk into the place. This facility will have to be ADA accessible, and the way they've described it'll work. There'll be a vestibule where one would enter. When you get a recommendation from the doctor, by the way, none of this is inexpensive. This is not covered by insurance. To even make that doctor appointment, it's a few hundred dollars. We're not, you know, these are not low-life druggies that are going to be using this facility. You have to get your script. It's good for two years. When you get your, I'm sorry, it's not a script, it's a recommendation. When you get that recommendation and your card, you go onto the state website, you assign yourself the facility that you're going to be using. This is by appointment only. You would call up Woodbridge or this facility and make your appointment. When you show up to this facility, how they described they would have it, there'd be a vestibule with a glass window. Your ID would be checked, the, so your ID, the recommendation would be checked, and then you would be buzzed in. Once you're buzzed in, you would submit your recommendation and figure out what you wanted to purchase, and you would wait in the facility, not wander out. You would wait in the facility until you got your, until you got your purchase. It's all cash purchase. Right now, you can't walk out of Woodbridge for less than $50. This is not, again, this is not a cheap drug fix. It would be a secured building, and I wanted to comment about Dr. Miller, who's an esteemed physician here. This is not a facility that's here for all your marijuana needs. They are doing this for medical marijuana only, very specific to this application. We are making no further claims than this one application with this one company. We are not promising to partner with them again. We are not promising to ever do this again. So, in essence, I don't know if I've forgotten some things that were on my mind, but I believe that this can help our residents and can help the many patients that benefit from medical marijuana. I would also like to ask that we form some kind of task force in advance of the state legalizing recreational marijuana and get the stakeholders in place and start discussing it in some formal manner, and so that we're prepared. But this does not mean this, if this facility does happen in Highland Park. Oh, one other thing. The application process right now is limited, again, to three regions, north, central, and south Jersey, and there are licenses only in those sections. Recreational marijuana is not the same licensing situation, or it won't be. So the state is controlling how many facilities are opening up. This is for a dispensary, but this round of applications is for dispensary, grower, or vertical, which means both. They have other businesses in Pennsylvania and Pittsburgh that are successful, and they have a grow facility outside of Pittsburgh. I'm assuming that's where their supply would come from. As it was stated by somebody, the supply here locally is very tight. Again, from Woodbridge, sometimes they have some new stock. They announce it on their website, and within two days, it's sold out. So there is an issue with product here. I believe that if we approve this and they get their application approved, that it would help us. That said, I think I got it all. I vote yes on this, and I hope that we could form a group that can analyze whether recreational marijuana would be appropriate in any location here in town. So thank you very much, and thanks for listening to me. Thanks to everybody that showed up. This was a good conversation.
Okay. May I have a motion to adopt items number 12 through 22?
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject a resolution to approve a dedication by writ of request for historic preservation funds?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject a resolution to approve a dedication by writ of request for affordable housing?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject a resolution to cancel other trust escrow balances?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes, this, I do want to comment on that, because I see Councilwoman Foster Dublin. We, sorry, Josh, if I'm stepping on you, you can yell at me later, but I do also sit on finance with Councilman Fine, and if you look at the resolution that's here, we had, so going, just stepping back, we have a new CFO, and I think it's good that we change professionals every so often to have some new eyes come in. We had donations that were collected here in town from when the Haiti disaster happened, and all these little, what I call in the banking world, ketties, of funds that were sitting out there, and they were never approved by the state. You can't just open up a trust fund in a public entity and say, hey, we're going to start collecting money. I think maybe we can, I don't know, come up with a GoFundMe or something, but we can't house the funds here. So that's canceling all of these little donations to Haiti and other earthquake donations that I know that we're that type of community that likes to collect donations and help our neighbors, but we, as the borough here, can't house them. That's a huge state audit exception, so we're trying to clean that up, and it's moving those funds, little funds, over into the current fund. And Councilman Fine, did I miss anything?
No, I want to thank you for addressing it.
Yes, that's what that is. So, yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject a resolution to approve a raffle license for Highland Park Conservative Temple Congregation Anchaemeth? So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Abstain.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject Chapter 159 Municipal Alliance?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
So I just want to say that one of the most rewarding things to me about being mayor is having the chance to meet any and all of our new volunteers. I'm happy today to ask for a, to let you know that I am appointing Grazina Strolla to the Historical Commission. She has lots of great ideas for that commission, and I'm really happy to see her come forward to serve on the Historical Commission. May I have a motion to confirm?
Motion to confirm.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes, and I have, sorry, I have one small comment. This volunteer, she has been coming to the meetings and hasn't been officially appointed. So any volunteers, we have a ton of committees and commissions, make sure that you're officially appointed by the mayor and council, and that you speak to your council liaison and make sure that you're on that roster, because your input and all your work and all your time and effort that you've come to these meetings on Sundays, and the case of the Historic Commission, to give your time is much important. And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Clerk, could you please report on the election of a volunteer firefighter?
I received notification from the Highland Park Volunteer Fire Department of the election of Montgomery Draper as a Highland Park volunteer firefighter.
May I have a motion to confirm?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Okay, we're about to enter our second public discussion session. Okay, we're about to enter our second public discussion session. Please step up to the microphone and state your name and address.
Tara Canavera, 361 Crowes Road. Just wanted to know what, where we are with appointing a new ADA coordinator? I don't know.
We are, we do not have a new ADA coordinator, but we will be working on that with the police department in short order.
Okay, just checking in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Herb Gross, Adelaide Gardens. I'm really sorry that a lot of people have left, because I really would have liked them to have stayed here and listened to what I have to say. I want to talk about a couple of issues that are taking national attention. The first issue is free medical care for every American citizen, for every veteran, their children, their grandchildren, everyone sitting in this room right now, your children, your grandchildren, yourself, everyone watching what I'm saying on TV right now. Every American will be covered for hospitalization. This has to be. Right now, it's a national issue. It's being taken up by our senators and our congressmen on both sides of the aisle. I give them credit. It's been many years coming, and the second issue I want to talk about is another national issue that concerns every American family, every person sitting in this room. We have to have free college tuition for our children. You heard me right, free. The United States government, and when I say United States government, I'm talking about the United States senators and the congressmen on both sides of the aisle, they have said that the American families right now have to pay back $1 trillion, $1.6 trillion. This is a crime. Our American boys and girls are being robbed of going to college. They're being forced to work in some hamburger joint to try to make ends meet. This has got to stop. I advocate and I support the United States senators and the congressmen that want to have free college tuition for your children, your grandchildren. We are being robbed. America is being robbed of our children's, they are very, our American children in the future are going to be great scholars. We're being robbed of these children being lawyers, doctors, engineers, social workers, et cetera, and I advocate free college tuition for our children. The other issue now, before Congress and the senators, it's a very big issue, and I think everybody in this room understands what I'm going to say. Our Social Security offices and our unemployment offices right now are being flooded by immigrants. These people that have come into the country, they never worked, they never contributed any money to their employers, into Social Security, into unemployment, and they're getting food stamps, and the American people are being forced to pay for this. Congress and the United, and the United States senators have said that these immigrants that are coming into the country, it has to stop. They're getting benefits, they're getting paid that they never worked, they never supported, they never belonged to any unions, and I support the unions. I myself have been a member of the Teamsters Union for 41 years, and I drove the rigs cross-country, every state, every city, and every Teamster that's listening to me knows exactly what I'm saying is the truth. We were working for, at that time, we were working for 80, 90 cents an hour. Yeah, you heard me right. And we had to pay, our employers had to pay into Social Security, and they had to pay into unemployment so that we could work. I know what the strike lines are all about. I know what the picket lines are all about, and I also know what it is to have a piece of bread on my table and to have a cup of coffee on my table. And again, I say, we were only making about 80, at that time, we were only making about 80, 90 cents an hour. I can remember waking up in Chicago, one eye closed and the other, my hand on my 38 revolver. This is what we had to go through, with these immigrants that are coming into the country and flooding our Social Security.
Excuse me, Mr. Gross, I'm sorry, just one second. We have in our bylaws, we're supposed to be out of this room by nine o'clock, since clearly we're not done. May I have a motion to extend for the next 15 minutes?
So moved.
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll, thank you, I'll wind it up real quick. I support the United States senators and the congressmen on both sides of the aisle, and we must stop this flooding of paying out benefits to our, from our Social Security office, our unemployment offices, to these legal, to these, you call them legal immigrants. I have much better words for that. They never paid into it, they never worked, they never punched the time card to pay for this. So why is Social Security giving these people the benefits and taking away money from our boys and girls that want to go to college? This has got to stop.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. Please state your name and address.
Juan Ratliff, 219 South Sixth Avenue. I have a complaint here. I mean, my thing is, you have these cars that don't even stop at stop signs, like the checker taxi cab here, they just roll right to the stop sign. I would like to see an armed police officer start giving them tickets. They speed down my street like it's Indy 500. You have senior citizens that can barely walk, try to get across the street, but I get hit. That's got to stop.
So Chief, Chief, can you make sure that our officers are watching for people blowing past stop signs?
Mr. Ratliff, I'll have somebody check South Sixth Avenue, and we'll start doing the details out there, make sure there's a cop watching the street by your house.
Okay, because this has got to stop.
We'll take care of it, sir.
And I have one other issue here. I do have some respect for the police, but my thing is with the police, I think that if they, if they, I think they, the police should be made to carry liability insurance. They own liability insurance. And the reason why, because you have some of these police officers all across the country that behave badly, and they never, they never face any charges, they never get convicted. Why? Because you have the union to protect them, to protect them. I think they should be made to carry liability insurance, and furthermore, I would like to see the police walk the beat and get to know the people instead of riding their hot cars. I like to see that as a life sign.
Thank you.
Chief, in regards to the question about having officers out and walking the beat, is the bicycle unit in effect now?
Bicycle unit is in effect. We also have officers to walk and talk.
Can you come up to the microphone so everyone can hear you?
Thank you, Elsie.
I forgot about the microphone. Hi, everyone. We do have a bicycle unit, it is in effect. We have a couple officers trained to ride the bicycle, generally down the parks, they ride the trails. We do that, we have extra manpower unless the officer gets out and meets people without having the glass window between them and the public. The public seems to really like it. We try to get out there as much as possible. We also do what we call a park walk, which often tell where the officer go park their car, get out, and they'll walk the avenue, visit the different top of people, go into shops, find out what kind of, you know, problems or anything, any concern the shop owners have, and you might be able to address a couple of them. It also helps knock down some shoplifting problems. You'll see officers often out in stop-the-shop riding, common areas where you have the shoplifters. So it is happening, it is out there. If you see us, say hi, introduce yourself, we love to stop and chit-chat with you. Feel free.
At some point, will you have officers in various communities, just like walking around or doing the bikes or?
It would be nice to be able to have that. Unfortunately, as soon as an officer gets out of their car and they walk away from it, their response to anything else is lacking. The police car carries oxygen, AEDs, first aid kit, things that if we need another call of emergency. When possible, we'll get out, we'll walk around, see a group of kids playing, we'll stop out and talk. We see a group having a cookout or something, we'll step out and say hello quickly, but on the whole, we don't have the staff that you park a car in a neighborhood for an afternoon and just walk around. Small gatherings, we do get out, we just talk to people, things like that.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Hey, sorry to interrupt you. Matt, 333 Belton Avenue. But we're not putting the whole ship in, we're eating the whole ship in before we double dip. All right, I'm going to go. I just wanted, I'm starting to think of one time, Mr. Furle, who's not here anymore, mentioned the, I just wanted to clarify that, and Mr. Scherer, you could correct me if I'm wrong, but this is statutory as far as the Fair Housing Act, the Fair Housing Act that requires these companies to collect bonds from developers to earmark for services that are being laid out.
Correct, Matt.
Okay. And so it's, and the funds, I guess, were being held because the borough, the boroughs support the housing trend, which just approved in July, and I guess having this, I'm responsible at least for the boroughs. I just want to make clear that every town is required to have a, and I would just concur with Mr. Ratliff, who I know from Hazard Garden, the taxis do on stop signs, and I'm pretty sure that they violate our, I believe all of these too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tara Canavera, 261 Crowes Road. I'd just like to add that since we have a new chief in, my son has mentioned quite a few times about officers just stopping to chat with his friends, and he feels more confident and safe in town. He's only 11, but he got to know some of the officers, and he feels a lot better with the police now because he knows that they're there, and they've been very, really great with the kids.
Thank you, thank you, Tara.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss Capel in Highland Park and JSM in Highland Park?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss Capel in Highland Park and JSM in Highland Park?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.